Pray for the people of Saginaw, Lord, that as we discuss these things, Father, that your hand would be upon it and that you'd be glorified in it. Father, we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Appreciate that. Item three is always participation. If you wish to speak on any published item, please fill out one of these forms with the City Secretary, request to speak, and you may speak on any item that is listed on the agenda. So happy to have input from folks. Item four, oh nope, one thing, one announcement quickly. This weekend, the city of Saginaw is going to Denver to participate in the All American Cities Competition. We are a one of twenty finalists for the national award, All American City. I was looking at the list, there's a lot of big cities on it. So a contingent of us, about fifteen of us are going up to Denver this weekend. We're going to participate and find out on Sunday night whether we win or lose. So we will have the next council meeting, hopefully have something exciting to report. But it's very exciting just to be involved, so we're thrilled. So we don't ever make announcements in here, so I won't do more than that. Item four, consent agenda. Acts from A is action regarding minutes of May second, B is action regarding minutes of May sixteenth, B is action regarding building improvement grant agreement with JD and Co. Hair Studio, D is action regarding purchase of email network monitoring equipment and software, E is action regarding task order number one amendment number two with Cobb, Finley, and Associates to provide utility assessment coordination services for FM-156 at Industrial, F action regarding memo of understanding for library courier service serving the metro share community of libraries. Council, any questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Paul second. Please cast your votes.
I was going to raise my hand.
Motion passes, let the record flag. We do have a forum. Thanks for coming out, folks. Item number five, introduction of new emergency management coordinator. Chief Spears.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an exciting item. We ended up having, I believe, thirty applicants for the EMC position. Many I'd consider high caliber candidates and the final three were really good contenders, tough competition, tough decision. Jennifer Nieder came out on top. I believe she's in her third week here. We're extremely pleased and excited to have her join the city, join our team. She has a super positive can-do attitude and she comes with some beneficial real-world experience. As I noted in your cover sheet, she has a bachelor's degree in emergency management. She served as a nurse and she served in the US Navy. She's a veteran. I don't want to preempt anything she may be planning to say, so with that, I'll let her further introduce herself.
Jennifer, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. As you said, Jennifer Nieder, I go by Jen to most people. Special note, on my last name, it's N-I-E. If you do E-I, I won't get your emails, so just make sure that you remember that. As Chief Spears said, I was in the Navy for five years. I was an aviation electrician's mate, so I changed a lot of light bulbs and spent a lot of time on P3s, which are the big huge sub hunters with the four props, and never ever set foot on a boat until after my husband, who was also in the Navy, finally went to a ship when he was a senior chief. He actually just retired, was thirty-two years in, and we have been here in the area for about five years now. And much of my experience, he mentioned briefly, I was a nurse for eleven years, worked in lots and lots of different departments in hospitals. My last gig as a nurse was as a school nurse and that kind of, you know, kind of spoils you a little bit, that seven-thirty to three-thirty, all the holidays off and all the weekends. And then we moved to Japan, which was one of our favorite duty stations, and we spent three years there. When I got back, we moved to California, went and got my emergency management degree, and then we moved here. And during that time, I spent a lot of time with the group called Team Rubicon, if anyone has heard of that. If you haven't, you should check it out. It's a really great disaster response group. So with Team Rubicon, I got a lot of incident command experience, done over forty-six deployments with them to type four, five, one, two, and three operations, spent a lot of time in Louisiana, Florida, Puerto Rico, Alaska, doing some really cool stuff and learning a lot about how to run an emergency operations center and got a lot of training and did a lot of training. So I'm excited to bring that side of the house into this job and help get our EOC really up and humming and helping out over in Lake Worth, of course, as well, and doing some really cool trainings and stuff like that, get the community involved. The CERT team is also, is already an incredible entity, but getting them some more opportunities to help out in the community is one of my passions and one of my goals to really get them connected with the community more because I truly believe way down deep in my soul that a resilient city is the ultimate goal and the more that we can help ourselves, the more that, the better off that we're going to be in the long run. And that's me in a nutshell, and I'm really excited to be here.
Welcome. Council, any questions for Jen while we have her? Will be nice, it's your first night.
Well, thank you very much.
We're very happy to have you, you're excited to look forward to see what you can do and it's going to be a great ride. We really look forward to working with you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, ma'am. Item number six, oath of office for new council member place four. City Secretary Janice England.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you recall, we had an election in May and Randy Edwards was elected to the place of council member place four. We need to swear him in tonight so he can take his seat with the council and begin his duties as a council member. So if I get him to meet me down by the podium, we'll get that taken care of.
If you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Randy Edwards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member place four.
Of council member place four.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the city of Saginaw.
So help the God. Congratulations, Mr. President.
Welcome, Councilmember Edwards. Glad to have you onboard. Look forward to working with you. Item number seven, election of mayor pro temp. Oh, and that's me. So every year, the mayor pro temp, we elect it, the council elects that internally. It is a one-year term. It's really, it's pretty straightforward what the duties are, take place, run meetings that I miss, and I do miss meetings, other duties as assigned such as speeches, openings, et cetera. So it's an important position. We need to have somebody ready to step in whether I'm here or not, so it's an important position. I will entertain nominations from the council. Cindy?
Mayor pro temp, Junkersfeld's just done such a tremendous job since she's taken over, I'd like to nominate her again.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations? Reverend, we don't need a second on this, do we? How does that work? Remind me.
You can either take a formal vote or it can just be a consensus of council.
Okay. Any other nomination? If not, why don't we raise your hand, all those in favor of Valerie, I always call you Tankersley, I'm sorry, Junkersfeld, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Good to have you. All right. Item number eight, considering the action regarding appointment of council member Edwards to Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors. Janice England, City Secretary.
Okay, this item is for the purpose of removing former council member Tucker and replacing him with our newest council member Edwards to the Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors. It's just a housekeeping item due to the election.
Do I have to call a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Do we vote or what do we do? What do we do, Bren? What do we do on this? You've got to remind me.
I would take a motion on this one and the next one.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for item number eight, Crime Patrol and Prevention Board.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve appointment of council member Edwards to the Crime Patrol and Prevention District Board of Directors.
Do I have a second? Paul second. Please cast your vote. Motion passes. Next item is item nine, consideration action regarding appointment of council member Edwards to tax increment reinvestment zone, Board of Directors. Janice?
This is basically the same, this is just, involves a tax increment reinvestment zone number one, Board of Directors.
I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the appointment of council member Edwards to tax increment reinvestment zone number one, Board of Directors.
Paul second. Mary, second. Please cast your vote. You're onboard, brother. Welcome. Let's go.
You are here.
You are official now. There's no backing out for now, brother. All right. Item number ten, consideration action regarding 2023 Employee Survey Work Plan Project. This, Melli McManus, Director of Human Resources. Welcome, Melli.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On, the employee survey was part of the 2023 Work Plan Project that the council approved on February 21st. On May 2nd meeting, the item was tabled to go over the questions of the survey. And then on May, I guess, May, I guess, May 22nd, the project was given to me since we had employees, HR's department deals with all the employees. So I had talked to Ron with One Point Insight and he stated that we discussed having a meeting with some of the council members and some of the department heads to go over the questions to see how we want to go forward with it. The first thing that we need to do, though, is get the contract signed and then we can introduce the questions and have a meeting with them and go from there. So all I'm asking for is just approval for the contract and then go from there.
Council, any questions for Melli?
I do have one question, just to verify it. When we did this in October 18th, I think it was, we did the three-year commitment and the cost was going to be $9,950, so this is not included in that, right? This is a complete separate thing?
Correct.
Okay, I'll just make sure. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, council? Cindy?
I guess two, three meetings ago, I can't remember, questions had come out and we, the council was asked to respond to those questions. Have those been looked at and, because they haven't come back to us?
Right. I've looked at it a little bit, but I think I need to have Ron, since he's more familiar with the questionnaire and the survey, to find out what we need to do and how we need to sort of kind of merge them together because we did get some back from you and from another council member and then go from there.
Okay.
He just hasn't had the questions because we need to have the contract first to really go through it.
Other questions? Oh, Nick, yes.
Yeah, I, I absolutely think that we need to make sure and put into this that this cannot move forward until the questions are done and the committee votes, the council votes on it. So however, we have to say this to make sure that it has, you know, we have a set of questions and the council here votes on those questions, this needs to be worded that way to make absolutely sure that happens.
Yeah, I think that's fine if you want to include that instruction in your motion. That'd be efficient.
Maybe you can make the motion.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions for Melli? Council? Anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consideration actions regarding, what is it, which number is it?
Number 10.
Huh?
Number 10.
Number 10. Regarding the 2023 Employee Survey with the amendment to, the questions cannot go out to the employees until it has been, those questions have been voted on by the council.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
A second.
Do I have a second? Please cast your vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Melli. Move forward. Item number 11, consideration action regarding award of bid for Saginaw Quanis Veteran Memorial Relocation. I believe that is Randy Newsom, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a project that we're really looking forward to get moving. We need to get the bid awarded and get the contractor on, on site in order to get this thing done by the November 1st deadline that we need to meet in order to have the veterans park relocated and them to be able to have their ceremony that they have annually down there. So I want to, I think, can you go to, keep going. Keep going. One more. Okay. The first thing I want to start out with, this list of veterans here are the folks that John Pete is one of the leaders that got us together with all this group of guys and veterans that we met with a couple of times. They went over the plans with our engineers and come up with some changes. One of the first things that they wanted to make sure that we did and since it is, was the Quanis Veterans Park, it's a name change, but they also wanted to make notice that, you know, we put a plaque up or something, a monument up, recognizing the Quanis Club as the founders, you know, that started the Quanis Park, Veterans Park. So that was the first thing we came up with, then you can go to the original, very first one. This was the original site, which showed that to the veterans, they didn't, they wanted to change up some things. We listened to them and go to the one. These are a few things that were changed. There's some flagpoles relocated over to the entrance over there to the left between, over there where you can see where it says library, public library over there where the entrance will be. The, the markers where the pavers were at right there, that was moved from another location. They wanted it to be up front as you come into the Veterans Park. There are trees that are, that are put in there as well, some benches, additional benches, electrical stuff that was added so you can plug in for your PA systems when they have their, their events down there. The sign right there, that's where the Quanis sign will be located right there, where the red box is at. Go to the next one. One more. There's a summary of the changes that, that the veterans come up with and our engineers put into the plan, and I think we covered everything that they requested and I think it's going to be a good-looking park. And with that said, I'll just, y'all have questions, I'll answer. If not, I'll turn it to Trenton and he'll go over the bids with y'all.
Council, questions for Randy?
I don't have all the questions that our veterans had. I don't remember. I thought that one of them was they, they wanted it renamed.
That's part of the renaming, yes. It's called Heroes Park. There'll be a loop for the first responders.
Yeah.
There's a place that they requested to have for the moving wall, the memorial wall, we allowed for that, so there'll be a lot of, a lot of bells and whistles that the existing site doesn't have.
What are you going to name it?
Heroes Park.
Heroes Park, okay.
Heroes Veterans Park.
Mayor, I'd like to table this till the next meeting. I'd like to at least have the council have an opportunity to look over the drawings and the plans and the information. I mean, our veterans are so important to this community, I just want to make sure that everything is right. You know, just, I mean, it would have been different if we'd been provided this information ahead of time. Just postpone it till the next meeting.
Are there other questions, council?
I know that we have a couple veterans here and I would, I would very much like to hear their opinion.
I have two questions.
Okay, great.
I was going to get to them as soon as the council asks a question. Council, other questions for Randy? My question, one question is, is there enough space to hold the Veterans Day celebration?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're hoping to have good crowds. We normally have a pretty decent crowd, but we want to make sure we've got enough space there. We've held it a couple different places. What about adverse weather? What's our plan?
So the fire chief has volunteered, again, as he has in the past, if there's adverse weather, it would be moved straight across over to the new fire station.
Okay.
And the new fire station?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we didn't put this behind the new fire station?
No space right now. There's, you see a area back there, but the, where the dirt saw moved, that's not all the city property, that's the next door neighbor's property. We used part of it and then there's a detention pond in the back, that open space, so there's not any room back there.
Any other questions for Mr. Newsom? All right, then why don't we hear from, we've got a couple people want to speak. First is John Pete.
John Pete, I'm on Fox Run Trail. Yeah, could you put the plans up? Where's the flagpoles?
Where's the what?
The flagpoles.
Oh, right here.
We didn't want them behind that big sign behind there where you got the, the current stage area there?
No, they're over behind where you come into the, right behind the more of the heights of the square. They're in the front? Yeah, right where you come into the, into the entrance.
The original position that you had sort of, they were back over. Yeah, they're not that far.
No, they're not, they're, they're, they're right there behind the, you can see them. You can see them right there in the archway, right there.
I would like to send a word, I would have them here with us. See them? It says the proposed flagpoles are up there.
Flagpoles is, you know, when you're coming across and you're seeing it from the street, the American flag will be definitely on the left and Texas flag will be on the right. When you have your ceremonies, you'll be looking at it the same way. And I think that instead of having a Heroes Park, we were going to keep it Quanis Veterans Park, the original. That was the last statement Rick Russell said when it was completed. There was no, no Heroes Park, but there was a spot for first responders in there, but it was Quanis Veterans Park.
Gave to you. So my recollection was that it was a desire of the group to recommend that it be named Heroes Park, but that the Quanis be recognized with a plaque at the entry, which is, is on there. Obviously, we have enough time and whatever the recommendation is, we can.
It was, it was to keep the original and that was the intent.
Sure.
Okay, and have a spot for the first responders and leave it at that.
We can absolutely do that. Yes, sir.
I think that was good. I would like to have looked at it beforehand. Thank you.
I thank you.
John, do you, do you, would, I guess what I'm trying to get, is this something you think we should table and give you more time to, you and the veterans more time to look at?
The flagpoles are where they're supposed to be and we keep the original and that was the intent, original name.
And you seen where they said the flagpoles were going? You good, you getting, you're good with it?
The back line, where that concrete block goes behind the satellite. It's just back there. You don't want that drop on.
You want to see the satellite?
Something like that.
Got it. So you're good with it, with that changes?
Yeah. We keep the original name, should be good.
Great.
I'd also have Deborah Higgins.
Good afternoon, Mayor Flipper and Councilmen. My name is Deborah Ligon Higgins and I am a longtime resident of Saginaw since 1972. I'm here to respectfully request a short discussion for public records about city council agenda item number 11, which is about the Quanis Veterans Memorial Relocation. The Quanis Club of Saginaw was chartered in September 1977, of which I have been a member since 2003 and am now the secretary since 2014. The Quanis Club concurs that the current location of the park has become untenable due to the city growth and excessive traffic on the main boulevard. However, the club had hoped to be invited and engaged with the renaming and the relocation of the park with city employees. Many years ago, past Quanis were very instrumental in the setting up of this current park. They had gathered donations of materials and had spent countless hours of labor, building, planning, yard work, and trash pickup before the events were held at the park ever since. We had hoped to not forget about the history of those past and current Quanis. Due to the lack of information or involvement regarding the renaming, relocation, the Quanis Club is now discussing among us the possibility of discontinuing the Veteran Day celebration that we've been volunteering as one of our service projects for a long time. We realize time has changed, life goes on. On a side note, when the city council agenda was uploaded to the city website and the item number 11 was found, two club members did take the initiative yesterday to inquire at the city public works office with Randy Newsom to inquire about the city plans for the relocation. We're not here to push against the relocation or the renaming. The Saginaw Club just wishes to let you know of our thoughts and concern. Thank you. And by the way, I do have the president of the Quanis Club here attending also, so if there's any questions between us and a former member, we can ask, answer. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So Randy, if we take, let's say, for example, we do table this, we have time to involve the Quanis in our discussions, future discussions in the next couple weeks?
So, Mr. Mayor, before this was approved, I contacted Debbie Mulker, who I believe was the president at the time. Randy sent her a copy of the proposed plans. I also called Barbara and Harold to talk about the relocation. So based on the feedback, we can certainly keep the name of the Quanis Park, but Randy can also, you know, he called Debbie and maybe we contacted the wrong person. I believe she was the president at the time. Okay. And. So in the feedback I heard from Mr. Pete, it is the recommendation of the veterans to keep the same name, which we are happy to do and we can accommodate.
Absolutely.
Is that fair? Okay, thank, yeah, we will absolutely do that and I, my apologies that, that we contacted the wrong person. So we did have a discussion about doing a historical plaque, which we may need to get some feedback about the history of the project and maybe recognize the original members and current members, whatever you'd like. We absolutely can do that.
Council, other questions?
I'd still like to give the. I'd still like to give the, the Kiwanis a couple weeks to, to look at this and get their input.
What is the pledge of the council? Would the rest of council like to table this item?
Well, I, I was gonna ask the Kiwanis before, before that if they had had, if they felt they had sufficient enough time to, to look at what came out today with these and, and be able to determine whether they liked the design, or did they feel they would like a little time to review it?
I, we're sufficient on that, on that, for the, for layout.
The layout. You're good with that?
Give me.
And I would like to say one thing. This, this makes, we've stumbled on this a couple times, and we, when we do things like this, we need to do better. We, we stumbled and get in our veterans involved, and I do, I do know that people on the council, when this first came up, and we asked, specifically council members asked them, did you all get our veterans involved? Did you have meetings with our veterans? And it, it was conveyed that they had reached out to the veterans organizations and things like that. So if, if that had happened, I don't see how in the world we could've messed up where the flagpoles and stuff went, things like that. And now we've stumbled again with the Kiwanis Club, who has selfishly dedicated their time to the city to do this. So I just want to say that in the future, we, we gotta do better.
In meeting with the Hawthorns yesterday, you know, I apologized to them, because, I mean, we were, we were in a rush trying to get deadlines and get, get this thing rolling in order to beat the November 1st, which is our target. And then I thought, from what I'd gotten, that Debbie Mulker was still, I know now is no longer the president, but I did send her the copy, and I guess that's why she didn't respond back to me. But, yeah, we, we, we definitely can do better.
I appreciate that, sir. So Randy, you have something else?
Yeah, I think with the Hawthorns and Mr. Pete agreeing to everything, I think we should move on with this. I make a motion, we move on with it.
All right, well, hold on, hold that thought just a second. Any other questions before we make a motion? Any other questions from council? And I appreciate you. Any other questions for, for staff or anybody? Do we want to hear from Trenton first before we move on?
Yeah, I think he needs to, to kind of let y'all know on the bids.
Sure, let's do that.
Yeah, just to summarize the bids, so we had reached out to 13 different veteran-owned companies to solicit bids from them. We received feedback from most of them that their workload right now was too busy to where they couldn't place any bids. We didn't hear back from about half of them. So we actually did not receive any bids from veteran-owned companies, but we received six bids from contractors locally, and they were very strong. Coal Construction Group was the low bid at 207,000 for the base bid, 233 for the total bid. And they have experience with several other memorial parks. They have five listed on their website, but they're also helping, they're, they're constructing the Thompson sidewalks, and it's going really well just south of here. So we're recommending, you know, based on their qualifications and experience, that we award the contract to Coal Construction Group.
Any questions on that, council? Where's this coming out of the budget? Where do we have this budgeted?
Park bonds.
Okay, excellent. Good deal.
And when do you anticipate the start of the project?
So, as they mentioned, we're really hoping to get this constructed before Veterans Day, so we're, we're gonna try to start construction in June, and Coal Construction's aware that this is a very quick turnaround.
It's Coal Construction. I told you, if we did make a motion, it would need to include the award of the bid to Coal Construction?
That's included in the motion, yes, sir.
As presented, okay. All right. All right, so again, council, I think we've got a couple ideas here. So I will entertain a motion, and we can see how the council wants to play this out. Randy, you want to go?
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the bid from Coal Construction on Item Number 11, and since Hawthorne and Mr. Peter are in agreement with it.
Okay.
It's been discussed, so to make a motion, we pass it.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion? Mary? Mary, a second? All right. All those in favor, or just please catch your votes. Motion passes. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Appreciate the follow-up, folks. Let's make this happen by Veterans Day. So we got the clock ticking. Thank you all.
Can we get copies of those plans?
You hear that, Randy?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, Item Number 12, Building and Code Compliance Presentation. Larry Little, Chief Building Official. Larry, how you doing, buddy? Good to have you here. Brought reinforcements, too.
I did, so...
Very nice.
Presentation is going to be done by Christopher Dyer and Deborah Thomas. Feel free to ask all the questions. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Dyer, and this is Deborah Thomas, of course. So basically, we're gonna go over with you tonight is just a brief, brief summary as far as what the Building Department, Code Compliance, and the rental inspections do on a daily basis. Which one? There we go. So I kind of want to introduce you to our entire team. First of all, as you all know, Larry Little, he's been with us for 22 years. He's the Chief Building Official. Myself, I've been here for eight years, Deputy Building Official. Then we have Jared Smith. He's a combination inspector in the rental department, per se, but he's also a building inspector as well. He does exactly what we do. Steven, or Rocky, as y'all know him, he's a combination inspector. Bryce Apple, he's been with us for five years. He just recently started with us within about a year, year and a half. He's been with the city for five years, but he's now an inspector. We hope to get him up to a combination as well, like Rocky Jones. And then we have Jeremy Roberson. He is a code enforc- or code compliance manager. So he's over the entire code enforcement spectrum on that, so we really trust his input, especially with 13 years of experience. Michelle Emmett just started about a year ago. She's, I think, this month going to be a regi- or a certified code compliance officer. So we're hoping on that. Deborah Thomas, of course, 19 years' experience. She is our, I, I call her our mama, per se. She, she does everything for us. She's our executive assistant, and she's done great. Maria Guines, she's been with the city for 17 years. She was first with Building, then she went to City Hall, now she's back with Building. So we're very happy about that. 17 years' experience there. And then Jennifer Wieland, she just started with us. She is definitely doing a good job on the rental spectrum, making sure that everything gets out to people in a timely manager, manageable time, and then making sure that we get what we need from them as well. So. So to move on, we're gonna start with Deborah. She's gonna kind of give her presentation over what she does in a day. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. So I would like to go over our major accomplishments that we've done kind of in the last year. So all of our office staff currently, that's gonna be Deborah Thomas, Maria Guines, Jennifer Wieland, and that's, that's it for that, that part. They are all permit technicians. They all hold a certification that holds them as permit technicians by the International Co-Council. Another thing is all of our inspectors do hold the Texas State Board of Plumbing License. So we have five of those currently on the top wall you can see there. So everything from Larry Little, myself, Jared, Bryce, and Rocky. We all hold licenses there. The department has three certified code enforcement officers, myself, Jeremy Roberson, and Michelle Emmett, which will be this, this month. All inspectors and rental permit staff have obtained the International Property Maintenance Housing Inspector Certification. So they could go out and do rental inspections if need be. So even our staff, our office staff could go out and do that. And then with our entire department, we are over the Saginaw Home Improvement Program. Goals for the future: continue obtaining required international co-council certifications. All inspector, inspection staff to obtain code enforcement officer license. That means our entire staff will be enforcement officers. Continue to cross-train all staff that's in all fields, even our enforced, code compliance officers and building staff to do some of the administration style, just in case somebody doesn't come in that day. Prepare all staff for future expansions and growth, which we all know we're all growing, so we want to expand for that. So now I can hand this over to Deborah as, as presented before.
So like you said, I've been here 19 years in the Building Department. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So...
You're doing fine. We're not that scary, I promise. You're doing fine.
I've, I've learned a lot in that timeframe. When I first came, permits would come in with an application, and I'd go put it on Larry's desk, and Larry would make the call and say, "I need this, I need that," and, and then he'd give it back to me, and I'd take the money. But in the last years, he said, "There's more that you can do upfront." So I need you to make sure I have, you know, site plans, and these are the things you need to look for. So over, over the years, I have learned a lot and tried to help them out to make sure they have what they need so that they can do their job on the front end. So we do answering phones, emails, people come in. The applications, we get them on napkins, we get them with green crayon, we get them with, you wouldn't believe the things that people, you know, two square boxes on a piece of paper, and I'll say, "Well, what are you trying to build?" "Well, this is my house, and this is my shed." Okay, I need more information. So it's a lot of teaching the public. People don't realize what details need to be on the plan so that we make sure they meet setbacks and, you know, codes and all those things. Contractors have to be registered. We spend a lot of time on state websites, plumbing licenses, electrical, mechanical, looking those licenses up, verifying that they're current, that their insurance is good. All of that is to protect our citizens so that they don't get a contractor who takes their money and then leaves. That still happens, but we really try hard to stop that from, you know, we're, we're there to protect our, our public. All right, let's see. This one? Okay. Some of the permits we issue at the counter, Maria and I and Jennifer, electrical, if, if a licensed, registered contractor is pulling electrical, mechanical, plumbing permit, we can, we issue that right there. Some permits have to go, the plans have to be approved by the building inspectors. Again, we're, we're reviewing those at the beginning to make sure they have what they need to look at that. If it's a commercial permit, it also has to go to the Fire Department and the Environmental Department. Sorry. Let's see. Annual permits, some permits are good for 180 days, some permits are good for a year, some permits are good for 30 days. So we're constantly running reports and making sure that we get the updated status of those permits. The mobile food unit permits, that was something you guys came up with, and we got a copy of the ordinance. We came up with the application to meet all of those requirements, and then I had to work, I work with Vicki over at the Rec Center, and she does the scheduling of the actual events. I have to email her, "This permit's good, this permit's not, dah, dah, dah." So it's a lot of working with other departments, follow-up.
Well, you want to, I want to highlight that real quick, because we just make these ideas and do these randoms, write in ordinances. We don't realize what it takes to implement, so I appreciate you putting all the work just to implement this. It sounds like you're ready to do this. That'd be awesome, let's do a food requirement, but the details that has to be done to make it happen are very, it's a lot.
Exactly.
And I'm glad y'all are here explaining that.
We have a fine team that can, that can definitely do it.
We, we do. It takes all of us working together and asking questions and coming up with, with all of the ins and outs to make sure that we get everything covered. And sometimes we have to come back and say, "We need this to change, we need that to change, and this didn't work." You guys have been great with, with making those changes for us. If there's anything. The ship program, that's a new one that we've been working recently. We have, we've received, what, seven, about seven applications. Five of them have, have met those requirements through us, so they are, they seem excited about it. The public seems very open to, to work in that, so that's something new that we've, we've started working on. Oh, coordinate with the Fire Department, utility billing, public works with regards to new, new buildings, new that come in. You know, I know on the monthly report, you see we issued a permit for a multifamily building. The reality of that is, that is, it's a 270-unit apartment complex, that's realistically 280 permits we issue. 280 addresses that had to get added to the system. Each one of those apartment units has to get the same amount of inspections as a brand-new house has to get. It's a brand-new, little, tiny house. It has to have its own electric, you know, release, its own gas release. All of those items have to be done individually in the timeframe of one, one permit time. So, you know, where I'm doing a subdivision of 270 houses, they come in one at a time. When you do an apartment complex, that's done at one time. So it's a lot on the front end and the back end to get that process through. Back to you.
All right, so just kind of go over what the Building Safety Inspections Department does. Brief, brief little statement here. Our mission is to assure the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens and community, and to be models of professional, effective, and efficient service delivery. We strive to provide high, a high degree of protection in the building environment, increase awareness of all standards and regulations, and effectively enforce city ordinances. Basically, educate the citizens, make sure that they're aware of how we're educating them and why, the reasons why we are, and then enforce those strategic pathways. Building inspections and responsibilities, kind of in a nutshell. Handle citizen and contractor correspondence, email, phone. Talk to them on a daily basis, if not on an hourly basis. Cell phones are constantly going off. Schedule and complete inspections and require documentation. Schedule and conduct meetings with homeowners, contractors, engineers, architects, and developers as necessary. So sometimes we have to call an engineer and say, "Hey, I've got this going on. This isn't what you said that you wanted on your plans." And we, we find a solution to make it work for the contractor. Perform submitted plan, plan and document review. That's daily. That comes through with Deborah, starts on the front end. Then on the back end, we go out and do the inspections and complete the projects. Participate on Development Research Committee, DRC, for new developments coming into the city and make sure that they meet all the zoning requirements prior to plan reviews, i.e., etc. Attend and provide Board of Adjustment meetings. If we need to change ordinances, we can, we can do that, but we have to go through the Board of Adjustments and, and make special provisions or go through the, the board itself. And then respond and investigate complaints, document findings and activities, and seek resolution. We'll go back to Deborah for a second.
I was just gonna say a few other things that we, that we do and, and that I do as the executive assistant. You know, reporting is a big one. I do a monthly report for you guys. That, that is a building report. I do the city manager report. I have to submit a report to TAD every month for the new projects that are new building projects. I send a report to the U.S. Census Bureau, the Building Statistics Department, and Housing Starts for, for Tarrant County. The Board of Adjustments, I'm the recording secretary for that. That is, you know, processing the application, doing the research on the, the notification area, sending out the notices, doing the staff report, the agenda, doing the minutes. It's a lot. The liaison for the Department-City website page for our department's software pa- you know, software that, that we process these permits through. So there's, there's a lot on my plate, and I'm grateful that we got Maria back from, into the Building Department. I'm sorry for the hall, I know they miss her, but I am so glad to have her back. And Jennifer has just been a wonderful addition to our team, and we're in the process of getting everyone up, up to speed and trained, and so we can share this load a little bit.
Take a little bit off of you.
Yes, happy, happy to do so.
So, yeah, I want to go over one of our newer programs in the Building Department is our Rental Permits and Inspection Responsibilities. Our rental program has grown significantly since the first year we've started. I think this is our...
Fifth year in it, I believe, fifth year?
And we're definitely growing with all the new growth coming into Saginaw. So I want to go over this with the rental registration notifications, registrations, and payment processing. That doesn't seem like a lot, but that is a lot of information that has to go into the system. Schedule, coordinate, and perform rental inspections. Constant, constant, again. Schedule, coordinate, and perform rental inspections. Constant, constant again. Jennifer does a very good job on getting those scheduled and coordinate with them and making sure that our inspectors go out and don't have just a dud. They go out and sit at a front door and don't get an inspection done. So she's doing a great job on that. Most rental inspections require follow-up notifications and follow-up inspections. So one house could be one, two, or three inspections depending on the correspondent with the landlord or the manager. Correspondents and correspondents within education of property owners and property managers. So sometimes we deal with owners, sometimes we deal with the managers, it could be somebody in California, we don't know. So it just depends on who's actually responsible for that property. Policy developments, consideration of new ordinances and maintenance of adopted ordinances. So sometimes we have to look at ordinance and say, "Well, we might need to change that and bring it to you guys to get approval for a possible ordinance change." They're always on top of that. Respond to and investigate complaints, document findings and activities, and seek resolution. Again, goes back hand in hand. We're here for resolving problems within the city. Just to kind of put some numbers out there in front of you, I know y'all like numbers. So right now, currently in the city of Saginaw, as far as our record show, is seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-two single-family units currently in Saginaw. Those are household homeowner dwellings. Out of those, twelve-hundred-and-forty-six are single-family rental registrations. So we could say, you know, a quarter of those are roughly about rentals. Then we have one-thousand-fifty-nine multifamily rental registrations. That's all the apartment complexes, townhomes, duplexes, or anything that involves more than one family under one roof. In total, we should have two, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five rental registrations year-to-date. And then just right now, for this year, into this year, we should have two-hundred-and-thirty-six coming and that should be for an apartment complex coming in that's being currently built. So at the end of the year, we should have two-hundred-and-thirty-six more. And then there's just a little side note, we are intensifying a significant amount of growth in multifamily and single-family rent for rent to continue into the future impacting rental inspections and programs. So many more units, many more houses being rented out, many more inspections to be done.
I got a question here. On that, do you see the violations more in the single, the housing rentals versus the apartment-type rentals? Or is it about even?
It kind of, no, with multifamily units, you have a lot more that the owners have to take care of, the management has to take care of. You have a hundred-plus people. So sometimes you don't know exactly what everybody's doing in their apartment unit, but we come in once a year and we find the violations. And sometimes we might have one or two for one unit or we might have twenty, twenty items per unit and we have to get it to the management. But we could also have a single-family home walk in there and maybe have fifty items that were, that have never been looked at before, that we're just starting a new program on and find out that they're not quite safe. We make that unit safe. So it kind of bounces out, especially when it's yearly or every two years that we're doing these inspections. I kind of wanted to put another number there, out there in front of you. Deborah kind of hinted on it a little bit here. But two out of one multifamily unit, it's one multifamily unit, could have multiple buildings on it, could be under all one roof, who knows? But it's typically two-hundred-and-seventy-plus permits that has to be hand-generated, hand-inspected. We have to go out and do two-hundred-and-seventy inspections on that one. Well, no, I wouldn't say two-hundred-and-seventy inspections, way more than that, but two-hundred-and-seventy units that receive all inspections like a single-family does. And rental, and rental registration has to take care of two-hundred-and-seventy rentals per year on that. So on the inspection side, for building inspections and safety, that's going to be an average of four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty inspections for that one complex. And on the rental side, that's two-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty inspections per year. So our inspectors are doing an average of those two-hundred-and-seventy units that does incorporate mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and building. So it's not two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-four or sixty-four, just that one, it's an average of four per unit. Code compliance. I'm very new to this, so I'm going to try to do my best if you have any questions on this. Code compliance is the inspection, improvement, and rehabilitation on environmental standards in public and private premises by determining the presence of fire or health hazards, nuisance violations, unsafe building conditions, and violations of any fire, health, or building regulation statute or ordinance. Basically, what our code enforcement officers do, of course, they keep the city beautiful or do their best to keep the city beautiful. And we get the complaints, we get the, "My neighbor's doing this, my neighbor's doing that." We have to go figure out what's going on. Wouldn't consider us like anything that the police department does, but we do have to go out there and make sure that we get a good case and if we can, follow-up will follow-up.
How many do we, do we know, how many complaints on average do we get per year?
It's just various, depending on how those neighbors want to be. A lot of them involve, don't take that as a complaint, because I don't know what that would mean.
Yeah, and I, there'll be, I have some other numbers as well, just to kind of pull that back in on the next slide. We kind of accumulated all of our numbers and I can't put everything on one slide for y'all, but if y'all would like that information, I could definitely hand that over to y'all. But the responsibilities for code compliance is to manage, conduct, community correspondence, email and phone, prepare daily violation reports, monthly reports, and manage open records requests. We do get open records requests and we have to provide a full, open of what we do in a single day or what it is for that address. Conduct follow-up code violations and complaints to verify completion. So our code enforcements are just basically same as inspectors. They got to go out, look at something, find the violation, go out and make sure it's completed, then they can sign it off and say you're good to go. Verify contractor registration. They help me out and Deborah out and rental registration out tremendously on this. Go out and find contractors who may not have pulled that permit that day and they get them, so. Create document and mail violation notices, manage post-abatement notices, schedule and meet with residents as needed or requested, and then assist animal control as needed or necessary. So if code enforcement calls out and says, "Hey, I got a code violation over here before I've served this warrant, per se," they'll go over there and they'll definitely assist in any code violations that are ordinance side. And then these were the numbers that I was talking about here. So right here, basically what we did is we just compiled five out of the, I don't know, I'd say eighty different types of violations that the code enforcement does on a daily basis. So these are five between ten-one and five-thirty-one twenty-twenty-three. So ten-one of twenty-twenty-two and five-one of twenty-twenty-three. Inopable motor vehicle violations, five-hundred-and-thirty. Garbage regulation violations, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five. Blocking the sidewalk and off-street parking violations, a combination of two, but that's one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty. High grass violations, it's going to get worse, twenty-five oh-nine, and then outside storage violations of four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-six.
Can, I don't, can you give an example of outside storage violation?
Outside storage violation is going to be more or less on the garbage cans.
Are there any things that are stored outside that are not being used? We do have a list on those that do, like, how many are actually used?
It could be a lot of different things. Play, children's toy equipment like that is not one of those. It's more of like the trashcans that get left out over the timeframe that's allowed by ordinance.
So a trashcan left out or not behind would not count under a garbage regulation violation?
That is more.
No, we're not, okay.
I think that regulation violation is more of like brushing debris and stuff like that that the garbage won't pick up.
Okay, got you. Okay, I just want to, so when we say toys, we're not talking about kids' bicycles and stuff?
No, I meant children's playground equipment and stuff like that. I don't think that really violates any ordinances for children. If it's broken.
If it has to be.
Not opable, that doesn't, go ahead with the vehicle violations. So we should be all right there.
One thing I want to point out, you sort of mentioned it, I've had complaints from citizens for about, "Oh, the city's picking on me, the city's picking on me." It's usually the neighbors that complain. It's not us. It's not us going out and looking for stuff. That's a little bit, most of it is your neighbors. So people listening at home, it's your neighbors. If you do something bad, they're going to see it and they're going to come after you. So we're just responding to citizen complaints, which we have to, so.
And they're actively out there looking as well. Yeah, they are driving the city every day out.
We are being proactive. We're not trying to write everything up, but sometimes we do have, you know.
And I know y'all are really good about working with people. I know I've talked this about Larry a lot. We don't want to write a citation unless we have to. We want to work with the folks. So y'all are really good. I applaud you for that. I wouldn't be that patient, but y'all are.
Thank you.
Definitely not incognito with the vehicle around.
Yeah, yeah.
So that does bring up an interesting question. How many of the violations we write up are citizen-reported or complaints versus us driving through the neighborhoods and finding them?
You'd say about?
Most of our violations are us driving down proactively.
Probably about a third. I would say probably about a third, give or take.
How much?
About a third. About a third of those eighteen thousand are at the bottom there.
About a third of them are us proactively finding them?
No, two-thirds of those are probably us proactively finding them. One-third's called in.
Okay, so.
Neighbor complaints.
So you've got a one-in-three chance that your neighbor called you in.
So looking at the large number of citations that you have here, what is the return on these? What does the city collect as revenue from these citations? Are they all just warnings or?
Yeah, yeah, hopefully we never have, we, again, we don't want to have to issue citations. It's not mostly in our vocabulary to just issue a citation. We want to try to work with the homeowners as much as we possibly can. If we're not getting a positive response or we're not getting them completing the task that we've asked of them, then that could justify us going into city violations. But mainly, most of the time, we're not collecting violations or citations unless we're going to court for some type of warrant or something like that.
It just seems like a tremendous amount of effort that you guys are spending, a lot of money that you're spending. I was just wondering if maybe there was a more efficient way to educate the public to reduce the number of.
Absolutely, yeah. We do have, we do have a lot of information on our city website. We have that avenue. Of course, we are always at these events as far as the council puts on for like training grain and other methods of education, so we're at those and we're free to be talked to and see what we do on a daily and get any information that they need. But yeah, it is a very tedious process, for sure.
It sounds like this could go back onto those information videos that the council had requested as part of the work plan earlier this year. You know, put a little two-minute blurb, "Hey, this is not acceptable, this is acceptable," type of thing.
Yeah, we are always, always for reducing of work, especially since we're growing. So right now, currently, from ten-oh-one twenty-two to five-thirty-one twenty-twenty-three, a total of eighteen thousand code compliance cases. Now, that doesn't mean that these, these are just recently closed, like closed-out cases, but we still have some that are open. So that number could probably be more around like twenty thousand at this point for like re-inspections and going back out to re-look at these.
So out of that eighteen thousand, I mean, I'll have to admit, in my twenty-some years of Saginaw, I've gotten a few Urals.
Nobody's perfect.
Nasty grams on my door. But how many of those actually end up having, where y'all actually have to write a ticket, I guess is what you call it? Because I'm assuming the majority of them are people like me that clean their act up.
Ninety-eight percent are violation, notice of violations.
Yeah.
Two percent actually miss citations.
Yeah.
Actually, I think you have to take the driver until Chief Spears is down.
Yeah.
He's working with us, we've got that, that is not our desire.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I agree. I was just wanting to show that it.
So we had to take the vehicle to do the ride.
Well, like you, I'm sure most people get the letter, fix it as quick as possible and, you know, "Oh, my gosh, I got a letter." That's my response. I'm sure most of them are corrected off the first letter, yeah.
And again, going, going back, we're not, we're not picking on the citizens. We're not picking on one person in particular. It's just a piece of paper. We give you instructions on how to fix it. We also put our phone numbers on there. There's many ways to get ahold of us and we can discuss that either in office, out in the field, or on the phone.
Good.
If you're supposed to pull the number, that's one of the ones that they take out, so they're probably checking that. If you look at those, they're eighteen thousand twenty-four, but time only, they're actually two code laws. That's not a staff of ten, that's two code laws.
Yes.
How would you compare that to any other numbers? So you can say they're a bit ridiculous. They can't do everything, but we certainly do our best.
Thank you. So basically, just to kind of conclude, our department needs at the current moment is one current inspector, positioned to be promoted to combination inspector. I hinted on that briefly at the beginning of the presentation. And then replace one code enforcement compliance vehicle. We do have one right now that we need to just swap over and get into the fleet that can be manageable and relied on in the daily activities. And then, of course, we want to thank you, the council, the city leadership for their, the senior city leadership for their continued support in the building code compliance rental departments. So we want to thank you tremendously for all your support and everything you've done for us in the past few years. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris and Deborah? Mary?
On the rental inspection program? I believe you do a certain building every other year, is that correct?
For the single-family?
For the rental inspections. Are they done every other year for a particular?
So single-family homes are every other year? They fall on the date of the odd number or the even number of the year that they're on. So if they're an even number, they'll go on the even number year or the odd number.
That's what I was thinking.
Yes.
Now, with the addition of more homes and multifamily, this is not a suggestion, it's simply a question. Does it seem like it would be manageable or a good idea to do it every three years? Or do you think that would result in more violations and more work?
Yes. So going back to the original question of, is there more violations in a single-family home or in a multifamily home? The answer is, we don't know who's coming in and who's coming out of those homes. So single-family homes typically have a tendency to live in there longer than a multifamily complex. Those multifamily complexes, if we were to move them to a longer year period between the two, because right now, we're currently on one-year rotations on multifamilies and duplexes. So every year, those complexes and duplexes and townhomes will get inspected. Single-family, they typically stay longer. It's more of a homey, homey feel unit, yeah, so. I would say that it might be a possibility to look at that and look at those numbers and see if we can do it every three years. But every two years, we don't get a higher complaint of, "Hey, you just came to my home last year, like, why are you back?" So we're doing pretty good with every other year rotation, I believe.
And then when you do the multifamily, like an apartment building, and it's, do you have to actually go into every single apartment unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, every single unit, every single, like, office space, like, office spaces, any type of like maintenance buildings and stuff like that. We're also doing a wellness and safety check of everything there, because those could be boiler rooms, those could be mechanical closets that may supply the entire, you know, development out there, so.
Thank you.
Other questions, council?
Yeah, I got one. Got a couple. So the first one is, I see that you got, you know, promote to combination inspector and then replace a vehicle, but I can't, I do know that being code compliance and stuff, it can be rough because, you know, most time when you deal with the general public, they're upset because, you know, you're telling them they're going to have to clean something up, right? So what's the biggest stress thing? What can, that, within the people, you know, that works in code, can we do to help or what's the biggest stress factors or what's alienating within your all's positions right now?
Come on up, come on up here.
Basically, it's telling the residents that they need to clean up the property, because they don't, they don't like to hear it.
Right.
They don't like to have, they don't like to hear that, because they feel like, "This is my property, I should do what I want." If it's not affecting me, why is it affecting you? And I have to explain to them, "Well, you live in a city that has ordinances and you have neighbors around you. This isn't the county."
Absolutely.
So that being said, they're like, "This is my property, don't look at it. I pay tax." I hear this all the time. "I pay property taxes, this is my property, I should do what I want." Well, you can't.
Your neighbors disagree.
Yes, neighbors disagree, ordinance disagrees, so.
And it is a, I mean, I'll joke aside, within reason, there's always that balancing act, right? How far we go this way of calling something pretty versus how far do we, citizens' rights? And, you know, and going other ways, so, yeah. So with that being said, what I'm really trying to get at is get to heart-beating what your all's. on what, what's your all's, you know, stress level and understanding within, you know, how's the underpinning? I mean, you know, well, let's just put it, is a big bunch of you about ready to, to leave us and, because you're very important to the city, we're trying to get that.
I can tell you this, it takes a certain someone to do this job. Not everybody can do it. There's many days I want to pull my hair out, but I'm like, you know what? This is, this is just them, this doesn't affect me, I have to do my job.
Good.
So, that's how I look at it.
Good, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, all my hair's already gone.
Mine's going great.
But, I, I think kind of to elaborate on that is, we have, we have a, we go through continuing educations, we go through trainings, we learn from each other, especially learn from each other. And we have a very educated and well-informed staff that, I don't, I think as long as we're just giving the information to the citizens and we educate and we, and they understand that, we're, again, we're not picking on them, we have laws that we have to go by, we have to enforce our city ordinances that are adopted, and, and also, we have fire codes, we have state, state laws that we, that the code enforcement officer has to abide by. I mean, essentially, yeah, we, we work for the state, the government, and then the local.
Right.
So we want to make sure that we, we enforce that.
One of our work plans is looking at some of the ordinances, it's causing confusion and causing you guys a lot of problems. Just a couple of weeks ago, y'all brought one through and we, we modified it, so that's, you know, please, you know, br, bring more of them. The ones that you read and you go, man, this is bad, or that's, you know, like I say, that's, that's causing us a lot of problems with the citizens that, because there's conflict in them, that, you know, you know, we, we're pushing Larry to get those before us so we can, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Y'all continue to work on those.
You know, because that'll help, we're hoping that helps you all in there and cuts the, the confusion out on both sides.
We appreciate that.
Good. I, I just want to say, I shut up here, but I really appreciate y'all going over the data and showing us it. This is not something, definitely myself and my profession, I don't, I don't get into all the time, so it's, it's very good to come here and educate, definitely me, on this and everything. It's good.
And we off, we offer to y'all to come for a ride along. I think that's been expressed many, many times, but the door's open, so y'all come get a ride along and get one.
Yeah, I was impressed, I did ride along about a year and a half ago with your all's rental inspections, and we actually found electrical one where they had just tied it up, up in the attic. I was amazed you found it, I mean, like that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, council? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great work. We've got a bunch of city folks here, so I want to just tell you all, the reason we're doing this is not to, to torture y'all and put you in front of the council and grill you. The reason is to educate us. We don't know what you do day-to-day, and this really helps us, it really does. Help understand all the work you do and what goes into your job, and we just know the departments, we know a lot of the big picture stuff, but this really helps. And so thank y'all for educating us and for going through this and staying late on a work night, so we appreciate y'all helping us out. So moving forward, item number thirteen, fiscal year twenty-two-three-twenty-four budget workshop, finance director, Kim Quinn.
Thank you, mayor and city council. This first presentation of the budget season, I guess, from finance department, is going to look familiar to you. This is just a quick overview or refresher for many of you. I won't go into it in too much detail, but as always, if you've got more questions, and especially the tax rate calculation, then I'm happy to sit one-on-one with whoever's interested in finding out all of the ins and outs of the tax rate calculation.
Control, alt, delete.
The new monitor's overloaded the system?
My IT people always just say reboot.
Yeah.
Whenever you have a problem, just reboot.
Yeah, right.
So I'll ask Kim to tell us some jokes while we're waiting. I know she likes this, so.
I don't, I'm not really a joke teller, I'm trying to think of it.
Kim's husband was raised on a farm, she might have farm jokes.
I don't have any farm jokes. After thirty-two years, I think I've kind of tuned them out. Here we go.
I really wanted a good joke, but.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, I, like I said, a lot of this is review for many of you, so I'm going to go, I'm going to go over it briefly. I'm, and as the weeks go on and further council meetings, we'll get into more in-depth that, on each of the funds, but my first, I guess, explanation and slide is, we always talk about adopting the budget, but it's actually thirteen different budgets that we adopt. There's a budget of, of work, financial plan for each of the funds. We have different funds because of different legal requirements, because of generally accepted accounting principles, we have to account for certain revenue sources in different ways. A lot of the attention, of course, is given to general fund and debt service fund, because they are mostly or partially funded by property taxes, but we've got other funds there. I'm not going to go through each one of them, because in future budget workshops, we'll go into in-depth of each of them, but just wanted to mention that, we always talk about the budget as if it's one thing, but really, it's, it's thirteen different budgets. And this is a pretty busy slide, too, but this just gives you an idea of, of those thirteen funds, what it looks like. Now, that big orange part on the, on the left there is the capital projects fund, so those are all of our capital projects. The last few years, we've had a lot of them, so that slice of the pie is large, but that would fluctuate. The general fund and the enterprise fund are the other two regular operating funds that are the second two biggest pieces of the pie, and then that third kind of darker blue is the debt service fund. That's where we pay principal and interest on the bonds. So when we borrow money to pay for these projects, this is where we account for the repayment of the bonds. So I'm going to, as I mentioned before, I'm going to talk a little bit about the tax rate, I'm not going to get too much into the weeds, but y'all, I just want y'all to have a good understanding, because you're the ones making the decision on the tax rate. So the revenue or the tax levy, the amount of taxes that the city collects, is, we calculate that amount based on a base times the rate. The base is the property values. Those are the, that's the pretty blue sheet love letter you get every year, gives you an estimate of what Tarrant County or Tarrant Appraisal District believes your, your property is worth. So that's determined by TAD, we have nothing to do with that. And then the tax rate is determined by y'all. So if you take the value times the tax rate, that's how we come up with the tax levy or the revenue, the funds that go into the general fund and the debt service fund. And again, just like we, there's two pieces to the tax rate, right? There's the O and M, operating and maintenance, that's the portion of the tax rate that funds the general fund, or a portion of the general fund. And then there's the INS part, the part of the tax rate that goes to pay debt service, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, that's principal and interest on the bonds, on the money that we've borrowed. Our current tax rate is just under fifty-one cents, and you can see that's split out, fifty-four percent of the total tax levy goes to general fund and forty-six to debt service fund. The next thing is tax rate terminology. I'm going to talk about each of these different rates just briefly, and like I said, I'm happy to sit down with anybody that's got more questions, wants to go into a little bit more in-depth. There are all of these ta, different tax rates that are required by law to be calculated. We are, we, we report, so I, as the finance officer, calculate these. I present them to the council, y'all are asked to vote on them, the vote on the proposed one, and then the final one, and there's lots of rules and regulations that we have to follow, there's specific calculation that we have to do, and then there's reporting requirements, advertising requirements, public hearings, all of those things. The starting point is the no-new revenue tax rate, and the no-new revenue tax rate in simple terms is the property tax rate that generates the same amount of operating, operating revenue as last year, so just the general fund portion of it on the same properties, and then add to that your requirements for debt, and that's how you come up with the no-new revenue tax rate. That's the starting point for all of the other tax rates that we have to calculate. So, if the tax revenue, you're trying to find the same amount of tax revenue, if your base is going up, the values are going up, your rate will go down to calc, to get the same amount of revenue. It's an inverse relationship, like a seesaw. If your, if your, if values decrease, which hasn't happened in quite some time, your rate would increase. So, just because your rate is increasing or decreasing, doesn't mean that the total property taxes are increasing or decreasing, it's a function of both. It's a function of, of base times rate. The next calc, the next tax rate that we are required to calculate is the voter approval tax rate, and that's basically the no-new revenue tax rate plus three-and-a-half percent growth, and then on to that, you add what's required for debt service. So, I'm trying to think, it's been maybe four years ago that this changed, it used to be eight percent. It changed to three-point-five, probably in like twenty-nineteen, when inflation was zero. And so basically, the, the state government is giving us three-and-a-half percent growth, we all know three-and-a-half percent growth is not cutting it these days, but that's, that's what the rules are, and so that's what we have to calculate as the voter approval tax rate, is three-and-a-half percent growth. And then, depending on if you adopt a rate over or, over or less than this rate, then there are different, different requirements as far as, as far as posting, and anything over this rate will trigger an automatic election with a few exceptions. And one of those exceptions is the de minimis tax rate, and we've talked about this in the past. The city of Saginaw is eligible to contemplate and approve the de minimis tax rate if you so choose, because we have a population of less than thirty thousand. The de minimis tax rate is the no-new revenue tax rate, remember, that's the tax rate that generates the same amount of operating revenue, plus whatever rate will get you an additional five-hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. And then add to that, again, the portion that is required to pay your debt, debt payments. And depending on, depending on what that rate is, there's, there's different requirements if no election, a voter may petition for election, or there's an automatic election, and that depends on a lot of things, but how that compares to eight percent growth. And as we've mentioned before, if you contemplate using the de minimis tax rate, then we have to ha, we have to use an accelerated schedule. So instead of our deadline to adopt the budget and the tax rate being mid-September, it's closer to, to mid-August. And then the last thing that I'm going to mention is the unused incremental rate. And I'm going to say this, and I almost hesitated to put the city of Saginaw one at the bottom, because it cha, so, the state comptroller's office changes the way we calculate the tax rate in small ways, but one of the controversial things right now is the unused incremental rate. So, I'm not going to guarantee you that this is going to be how it ends up being, because depending on what the comptroller, what their worksheets come out to be, and usually, they don't do it till the very end, so we probably won't know until the end of July or early August. But the unused incremental rate is allowed, because the state legislature decided they don't want to penalize cities that don't automatically go up to that three-and-a-half percent every year. So if you don't want to go to the full three-and-a-half percent one year, you can save that incremental difference for three years, and you have the ability to use it within three years. And so this is just my example here. If, say, in twenty-twenty, you adopted the voter-approved tax rate, you have no unused incremental value, but the next year, say you, you did point zero-zero-two-five less, you adopted a rate less than the voter-approved tax rate, and then the next year, you, you saved a penny, then the, the third year, you would have a one-point-two-five cents that you could use over and above your voter-approved tax rate. So, with that being said, city of Saginaw has one point, one-and-a-half cents based on the current rules, but what I'm, what they're contemplating is, is that if you have used one, instead of having a zero there, you would have to subtract it. So, depending on what they end up deciding, we could have less than, less than a cent, a half a cent.
Will they decide that this year in special session?
They.
Right now?
Well, so it could also change depending on what the, what the legislature does, but normally, this is just administrative. So the legislature's come up with these great ideas, and then, as we all know, when you actually, it comes down to the nuts and bolts of how do, are we going to really implement these things, it doesn't always turn out the way they expect it to turn out. So even if there wasn't a legislative session, we still have changes from the state comptroller's office, because it's, you know, as we work through these things, different issues come up, and so they try to correct those every year. We never know when there's going to be a change, but you just kind of hear, oh, they're working on this, and the unused incremental rate is one of the things that they're looking at.
And refresh our memory, what would a one-and-a-quarter cent equate two-dollar wise for us?
One cent, well, based on our preliminary values, we're about two-point-eight billion, so one cent would be about two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. That's going to change, but right now, may estimates, we, we may lose a little bit, just because I think the protests were delayed a little bit because of the issues that TAD was having with their website. So that's my presentation on the tax rate in a nutshell. Like I said, I'm happy to sit down if you want to know more detail about it, and as we get closer to adopting the tax rate, we'll have more discussions on it. Any questions at this point?
Go ahead, Mary.
If a city decides to use the de minimis tax rate, what is the reason that the city is required to use that accelerated time schedule?
It's just state law. That's, that's just.
Any, any rhyme or reason behind that, that you know of? It's, I, I couldn't think of anything that would require that. I mean, any reason why that would be.
Well, they want you to, so if you have to have an election, so if you go over the eight, if the de minimis causes you to be over the eight percent, then you have to have an election on the, on the uniform election date, which would be in November. So you have to have time in order to call that, and so that's how you come up with the date, which is the middle of August, because you have to have time to call the election and all of the other steps that are required.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions for our finance director? Thank you, ma'am. Is that all, y'all done?
That's all I've got.
All right, excellent, thank you, I appreciate that. Well done. Thank you for these, this budget update. All right. Item fourteen is executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one that oh-seven-four personnel matters. We will adjourn at, what time we got? At seven-twenty-eight. We will return to adjourn.
Do you stand?
Do you stand?
Doors won't come here.
(noise) (noise)
Is that ready? Yes. Any Germans have the input?
I don't know.
It's like... I work...
Yes.
My birthday, huh?
It's your birthday?
Yeah.
Well, it's Christmas, don't be talking about it on Christmas.
If I work someone's birthday.
I'm gonna keep you in the thing.
I think I did that.
I just... I just wanted you to have...
Right now, the red hat and the mail.
There we go.
Broke him since jump over there for game of the evening, right here.
We got five, let's get with your turn.
Where did he go to? He was in Sydney's missing team.
Right?
Sydney's missing team.
She even in here, one, two, three, four, got, we got five.
I heard the cats.
I'm asking if I can...
You don't do what you want.
I'm going to pass it over, say, ah.
Two minutes.
Yeah, I get that, that's early, thirty minutes.
I will testify that I do see your vehicle over across from the parking lot every morning when I come in. You do get up early, apparently you do.
Was that my name?
I don't remember.
Was it the rush?
Did Brady move the link?
The guests is walking.
Okay, the little houses on, um, McAvoy right here? The water floods the street when they're water.
Oh, you put it there.
Brady, those people, little houses over here on McAvoy?
Little houses?
The little, that's like channels, the little, I can't think of them. There's not the addition of the one next to it. Their water's made by water, like old tree. I poured water out right this morning and I was like...
Water's a little...
No, I just had it washed.
Sorry, I was not making...
Uh, what time we got?
Um, clock.
Eight forty-one.
Eight forty-two.
Eight forty-two, we're back in, back for executive session, entertain a motion, do adjourn.
May I make a motion with your turn?
Randy gets to do it.
Oh, yeah, right.
Oh, it's Randy gets to do it.
Your turn, so you're the new guy, so make the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion with adjourn.
I'll second it.
You got it, Janice?
Got both ends.
All's in favor at, what time is it, eight twenty, no, eight...
Eight forty-two.
Eight forty-two, right here, thank y'all.